Everybody please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you made me seated. Roll call please.
Summer Madison, position one.
Larry Vander, position two.
Anthony Provano, position three.
Eddie Campbell, position four.
Tammy Kaufman, position five.
Earl Popoff, mayor, and also in attendance is our city administrator, Jody Fritz. So we have, to begin with... Where's Matt?
Yeah, I get your answer, come on.
Oh, okay, so this is gonna be a... This is special orders business, we're going to... This is the final review of the housing strategy report, so...
Hello, Matt.
Hi Matt, this is Jody in Gold Beach.
Hi Jody.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep, can everybody... I'll turn it on just a minute. Okay, so you're on.
Okay, um, so hi, everybody.
Hi Matt.
I would say thanks for having me there, but I'm not there, but good to be talking to you, even from a distance. So I don't have a lot of time stuff to present over the phone to you. I just wanted to kind of run through the list of updates we made to the initial draft housing strategy plan based on conversation we had with you last time I was out there with Brendan Buckley. So I'm just gonna kind of run through the list that accompanies the agenda packet. I'll refer to the pages in the agenda packet, the red page numbers rather than the ones in the report. And just, I'll be happy to answer any questions or if you can get additional comment. A lot of these changes are, you know, they're pretty basic, almost like housekeeping things. I'll just quickly walk through them and feel free to interrupt me and, you know, ask questions or make comments as I go along. So we did a few just things like updating page numbers and the table of contents. Added some information about the fact that this project was funded from a grant from BLTB, so that's all on page eight of the packet. Revised the dates, you know, in the footers on all the pages compared to the previous version. On page 10 of the packet, that's kind of the start of what we kind of assumed you could use as a narrative to go into an updated housing chapter of your comprehensive plan. So we added an introductory section into that narrative, kind of just below the top of that page, just to help you provide a little context. And I will say that all this information in that draft narrative section and the policy section is information that you can use and, you know, you'll likely go through that and revise it or refine it as you go through the process of getting your comprehensive plan when you get to that point, but it's kind of our starting point of information that you can use to do that. So we updated that. We also, kind of in that same section on pages 11 through 15 of the packet, we added a couple of additional tables and charts just to provide a little bit more kind of context and summary of the results of the housing and demographic projections that were included in the more detailed report from Johnson Economics. And on pages 15 and 16 of the packet, we added a little bit of clarification related to the comparison of how the needs and supply and also reflected some of the conversation when we met with you last time, which is that the table on page 15 of the packet shows this potential deficit of single-family detached land, but really, oh, here, 1R and 2R and our 1R, 2R, they all allow, they all allow single-family detached housing. You can really think of those as a combined supply of lands available for that housing type, and if you think about it that way, there's really not a deficit as the table shows, so we noted that. And then, I'll get to the next one in a minute, there's still a little bit more sort of on that topic, a little later. Page 16 to 17 of the packet, we went ahead and added this table that summarizes the strategies that are described in more detail on the rest of the report, excuse me, as information you could also potentially include in your, in the body of your comprehensive plan in the housing chapter there. You're updating that, and that's really kind of up to you, you know, how much of that information you ultimately include, but we went ahead and added it into the draft narrative section. And then, in that previous version of the report, we had included this table that's currently on pages 20 to 21 of the packet that kind of identified our assessment of your comprehensive planning policy. But for this updated draft on page 19 of the packet, we went ahead and proposed some policy language for an updated housing chapter of your comprehensive plan. So, you know, your existing comp plan has a, just a few policies there, it's got a goal and it's got, I think, four policies. So we recommended some additional policies and some changes to the policies that you have, just to kind of address a broader range of housing related objectives and issues. So that's really probably the most substantive thing we did in this updated draft of this report was to add this policy language. And if you all have any comments on any of that, you know, if you have to get your them tonight, we can update for them and then just recognize that that's all language that you will presumably reveal and update down the line when you get to the point of updating your comprehensive plan. And then just a couple of other things we did on page 27 of the packet, so this gets kind of away from the report, we added a short section related to short-term rental housing regulation. We hadn't included that in the earlier draft of the report. You all already do this, you regulate short-term rentals by requirement to be licensed, you, you know, monitor them, and you have certain restrictions on, on where they can be located, at least in terms of how they're approved. So we included that information. Again, if we didn't get that quite right, let us know, we can update that. And then finally, we just made some minor editorial changes in kind of the second half of the report where we described various housing measures and strategies. So I mean, we just looked through it and through Reddit and made little changes here and there, or anything, you know, we heard about last time we were with you that didn't fall into these other categories. So that's a summary of what we've done. And, you know, this document, along with any changes you all might recommend tonight or as a follow-up to tonight, that will be, you know, kind of that along with the more detailed reports and the billable land inventory data and analysis, all of which will provide you, you know, with all the files and data, that kind of is it in terms of the products of the process. So I will stop talking, or I won't be talking especially out of a little phone, and see if you have any comments or questions or suggested changes for me.
Thank you Matt. Questions, counsel? Yes ma'am?
Hi Matt, it's Tammy Kaufman, surprise.
Hi Tammy.
I had a question because I couldn't find it, but I didn't read it as carefully as I did the first versions. One of your first versions, you talked about removing land that was in minus slide areas and geological issues and so on. That information doesn't appear to be here, but I think what you ended up with is that answer, is that correct?
Yeah, so in the billable land inventory work that we did, we deducted lands that were constrained by slopes, those slopes over 25% or land site hazard areas. So we identified those as constrained and we, any of those areas that were found on a parcel that we otherwise had indicated was vacant or partially vacant, we removed from the acreage calculations, we removed the acreage that was above that slope and/or within those landslide hazard areas. And we didn't provide a lot of description of the billable land inventory process or methodology in this, this proposed comprehensive plan narrative, but you know, if you wanted us to kind of pull some excerpts out of that, we'd be happy to do that, or, you know, we'll give you those reports, you can have those reports. And now it'd be easy enough to kind of plug some of that information into the comp plan narrative when you get to that point, but kind of a long answer, I think the short answer is yes.
I'm just wondering if it'd be helpful in the future, just have at least a couple footnotes that we did do that.
Probably we...
Sure, yeah, yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Is everybody okay with that?
If we adopt it, I would suggest that we adopt the billable lands, you know, as an annex, so then they're together.
Oh, so then we do have that in the record?
Yeah, so then 10 years down the road when we say there's that document...
Yeah, I think you would want to do that.
Yeah.
And then, I noticed on, I wrote page 19, yeah, page 19 under policies number A, I think you meant to remove a strikeout.
Meant to remove a strikeout?
Yeah, it says efficient.
Number A, under the policy A concurrence maximum, which we struck out inefficient.
Yeah, did you mean to delete that?
A little bit question whether or not we maxed the strikeout maximum.
Did you mean to delete it?
I would, did mean to delete it because I think saying maximum usage, sometimes using land as sort of its maximum efficiency or developing it to its maximum allowable density, I would think may or may not always be the thing you want to do on every site. And so I just felt like maybe efficient was a better use, better word there. So that was the thinking, actually, did mean to delete the word maximum and swap it with efficient. But it, you know, I'm just kind of my personal, personal opinion on that one, if you all want to kind of keep maximum or, or use a different phrase or word, you know, that would, that would potentially make sense to me.
Efficient sounds good to me. Yeah, yeah, we'll leave it at a stand, Matt, thank you.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Sure.
One more question on page 27. You talked about parking reductions. And it said that, says that research shows that households with lower incomes tend to have lower car ownerships and driving rates. And I'm finding in rural areas that the opposite is true, that they actually have more cars, maybe because they don't always run, they have one or two in the shop and one that they run. But I'm thinking in urban areas, they probably just have transit, I don't know, I mean, does that research include rural areas?
To some degree, it does include smaller communities, I don't know if I would say kind of rural areas, you know, kind of areas of outside cities or unincorporated areas, I think it does, I will, I would be happy to kind of go back and look, there's been a couple of recent reports done by the Portland State University Transportation Research, I forget what it's called, the acronym is TREAT, but they've done a couple of reports and it's based in part on data from, from community south in Oregon, but that was the one, the study in Oregon was in Portland metro region, so that doesn't really, it doesn't have the local cities outside of metropolitan area, but they also did a study of communities in California, and it included kind of a mix of more urban communities, suburban communities, and then I think some, I'll call them kind of ex-urban or smaller communities. And there was, you know, a fair bit of difference in terms of what they saw in those various categories, but I think across the board, they saw some reduction, and they were looking at, I mean, they were looking at specific types of housing development and specific, both in specific income ranges or with, yeah, the income in specific ranges, so, you know, I don't want to overstate this to this document, and I think what you said I have heard that, you know, in other areas, particularly in communities where there's not a lot of other options to get around, you know, you may not see that kind of reduction. I think it probably does depend on really how much money people make and at some point they just can't afford all the things they need included, and so in some cases, they do tend to double over, like car ownership, but again, I don't want to overstate it here, and so we can kind of either clarify that or kind of look back at those studies, really to address smaller community with years, you know, we can modify that language there.
Any further counsel? Anyone else have anything that they would like to address, Matt? All right, Matt, thank you, it looks as if we don't have any further questions, and I do want to thank you for all the work that you're doing. With that in mind, I don't believe that we have to keep you much longer.
Okay, well, you're very welcome, and yeah, very much appreciated the opportunity to work for y'all. It sounds like maybe there's a couple of changes that we can make to the text of the, in the document, won't really affect the policy so much, but maybe, excuse me, about the billable land inventory in that section of the document and take a quick look at what we said about parking, we might make some, some modest changes to the narrative there, and then it sounds like you should be in pretty good shape for the, for the document, is that kind of all right?
Sounds about right, thank you sir.
All right, you're very welcome.
And have a good evening.
Okay, bye Matt.
Thank you too. Bye-bye.
All right, we have Commissioner Pach here and Steve Byerland. And this is going to address counsel, this is something that I wanted the council to hear, it has to, it's a fishery, and quite frankly, the money that is being lost in those, that could actually help our county to a greater extent. With time being taken into consideration, is it possible, Commissioner, to have this discussed, say, within 10 minutes?
It wouldn't be very much, we were figuring between 20 and 30 minutes at the date.
You were going to spend 20 or 30?
Between 20 and 30 minutes.
15?
You have to dabble, potentially you're not interested.
Well, the thing is, is that we have so much on the agenda tonight, and we have another topic that I'm sure is going to take some time.
Yeah, unfortunately, we were hoping to get this heard the last time and it just mixed up, so we came back this time.
Right, if we could do it within 15 minutes, that'd be great, and one thing I do want to thank you is that you made sure that we had the information within our package, so, which delineated that quite nicely, I think, pretty much what you had to say.
Maybe if he just does the talking and I don't say anything, maybe we can get it down, I'll keep my mouth shut.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want us to have a table over here real quick so we can sit?
Yeah.
The podium there?
Yeah.
And then we have a slide presentation?
I gave them the slides in the packet.
Right, right, so we have...
And of course, the audience doesn't...
It was on the website.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Steve, you're up.
Okay, I call this the unknown Rogue River spring salmon tragedy. The Rogue River is one of very few rivers in the United States that has a spring problem of Pacific salmon. There isn't any on the east coast. There's a little bit in Clamath River, a little bit in Yount Falls, and the other two rivers are the Columbia and the Rogue. Spring snook go into the Cascade Mountains where the water's cold, hold for up to 16, or up to six months before they spawn. And so they hold that cold water. When we, when they built Lost Creek Dam, they blocked a lot of that habitat, about 30% of the habitat the spring snook would have held in, and it was the coldest water because it was the farthest upstream, you know. The, there was environmental impact, so first of all, there was a lot of meetings around, you know, some in Gold Beach grants passed, and a lot of people from here traveled grants passed back in the day when it wasn't quite as easy to travel as it is now, you know. This project started in 1935, you know, it held up during the war, came back on after the 55 flood in 1956, and the... Those meetings were very pointed at one thing, that any project done could not be detrimental to fisheries. And it goes back to 1956 when that came in, it's followed every document forward, though it has been detrimental to fisheries, because primarily it's because the Corps of Engineers, which is not a friend to Oregon or to Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, they're loggerheads, you know, and the four very nice people, but actually getting something out of something else. Today, they're closing Fleeburg Hattery on McKenzie River, deciding what to take from it, what day are they going to do that to the Rogue? And a couple of years ago, they fired ODFW for managing the seven mitigation hatties in state Oregon, you know, only to hire them back all but one at Fleeburg, you know, and ODFW really can't say too much to them, they're an employee. And so it's up to local governments to stand up themselves, you know. And as to the amount of money that's being lost, it's a, it's kind of in limbo, when I started this and started writing this stuff, I used the lowest numbers I could find, you know, so I wouldn't be overstating. Using a study done by Econ Northwest, highly respected group of economists for the, and this study, it was done in 2009, economic value of Rogue River salmon. There isn't another study that's more definitive. Unfortunately, Rogue River salmon, we have false snook, spring snook, Coho, summer steelhead, winter steelhead, and they all have different values, so it's kind of an average now, Coho has very little value inward, you know. This would need to be updated to just the spring snook, which is the most valuable salmon to swim anywhere on earth, you know, and they won the world's fair every year, they were in, you know, the best salmon in the world. 13,020 hatchery adults were returned to the hatchery after the hatchery was, I mean, to the hatchery after the dam was built. That didn't include a one-mile stretch below the dam, which is another 10%, you know, somehow it got lost in the paperwork, you know. But 13,020, over the last 14 years, we averaged 4,800. That's a tremendous amount of money when you multiply it by fish, you know, and the number that we're using now out of here, which is the suggested one for salmon value for the Rogue, which wasn't the lowest one, is $1,824 per fish. Now, it's, it's hard to keep your mind around, but fish have value spawning in the river, they have value escaping, you know, you know, not every fish has to be caught to be an economic loss, you know, hurts our tourism, hurts the fact that Rogue is a pre-empty river for spring salmon in the world, and it's a timeframe their other fisheries aren't going on. The value at $1,824 per fish is a loss of $8.9 billion annually. That's a, that's a big number, you know. When you include the wild fish in it, wild fish, hatchery fish have declined 63%, wild fish have declined 60%, wild fish have declined because the dam was built to stop the migration of gravel. The Corps recognizes when they build a dam, blocks gravel, ODFW has difficulty with that, you know. And 25 years ago, we did a study or a plan with ODFW with the Corps of Engineers on board to put gravel in the river, ODFW blocked it because they said there wasn't a study done prior to the dam, saying how much gravel was there and how much was there now, but everybody knows gravel's not going to jump over a 325-foot high dam. But now they're putting their foot forward that they're going to do studies, 25 years after they promised to do studies. So we get the same story over again, and I want local governments in the citizenry to be aware of what's going on, and I can put this data together, it's not, it's not easy to do, but it's not impossible to do. One of the things with the hatchery, that makes a hatchery, it's a hatchery failure, in 2016, we had 1,800 hatchery fish come back. A river guide cannot take somebody out fishing, and when he can only catch a hatchery fish, when there's only 1,800 adults that go up the river, you know, it's impossible. What your customers do is they leave and they never come back to Gold Beach. And the damage that's done there isn't included in the economic loss, when people come, you know, and they don't do well, they don't come back. People come and they do well, they go home and tell their neighbors, and everybody comes, you know. The return in 1981 to 1990, a 10-year period from the hatchery, was a 2.6% return on the smolt that they released. That was a very good return, you know, it's something we should expect, you know. In the years 1991 to 2000, that dropped a 1.9% return. In 2001, 2010, it dropped a .54% return. The last eight years, .38% return. Now, the same hatchery produces steelhead that returned at a 1.4% rate. Kind of makes you think something's wrong in the hatchery. When we started doing our letter of no confidence with the Corps of Engineers and ODFW, it was less than a week before the Corps had a team flown into Medford to the hatchery with a checkbook to start fixing repairs that needed to be done to hatchery that had been requested for years and years. This year, even after the checkbook, 1.3 million eggs were lost due to fungus because the filter system was so corroded and in such bad shape. The Corps doesn't want to spend any money on this hatchery, they don't want to, but they're required to on the environmental impact statement, which is the enforcement arm of the National Environmental Protection Act. People say EIS, so what? Well, EIS tells them how they're supposed to do it, when they're supposed to, where they're supposed to do it, and we have that on our side. And all we're asking is not a single additional hatchery fish be put in, we just want the hatchery to be managed, it was the state yard hatchery when it was built, and it was built to produce a, basically a state yard of fish, and with the largest hatchery in the world when it was built. It's in disrepair. ODFW, they call them a contractor, but it comes to my mind, you're not a contractor. A contractor supplies his own tools. The tools they use at the hatchery belongs to the Corps of Engineers. ODFW's in a bad position, using bad tools with nobody to fix it and having a boss that won't fix it. And I'm trying to keep it short for you. We're looking at, between the wild and hatchery fish, we're looking at an $858 million loss in the last 21 years.
Good job.
And it's going to get worse, you know.
Have you, real quickly, have you noticed anything within the past few years? I mean, a decline in, because I really haven't, I haven't really looked for it. A decline in the number of fishermen that we are, that we have annually?
Not so much decline in the private, you know, but they're, they've been in the last, I would say, four to five years, a huge decline in the number of guides taking clients out in the spring. And that stands all the way up the road because you cannot take them out, you know. Don't, you're, we're not looking at the Rogue River in the fall. That is a healthy fishery, you know. But the EIS says, says that they will not do damage to any fishery on Rogue River. You know, and in fact, it says the other, that they want to enhance fisheries in Rogue River, you know. And, but the spring salmon fishery is, well, as you well know, Mayor, is that we have now a no catch on wild fish, you know. I did a piece today, I spent about four or five hours on it, going back and looking at all the regulations today compared to regulations of nineteen seventy-seven when they built the dam, when the dam was complete, you know. Cost ten bucks for a license back then. Now you blow a hundred-dollar bill to go salmon fishing, just goes for one day, you know. You know, the number of fish that you can catch has been gone from forty annually to five a season, you know, and on wild fish, you know. And the, the opportunity to fish is much, much less with a much greater cost, you know. And it's kind of eaten away a little bit here, a little bit there as it's gone along. And at some point, you know, we need to stand up and protect our fisheries and do something about it. And I hope you join the county with their efforts.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Posh, you have some.
I just, I want to reiterate some things. I just want to reiterate some things that Steve said. Steve done an enormous amount of research on this over a lot of years. He actually has documents that ODFW and, and the Corps actually can't believe he has. They've actually taken a lot of their documents that Steve has now down off their websites because it's information that they really didn't want people to know. But what I want to let everyone know is that this has become almost punitive. Because you've got this document that was written and signed for the Cold Rivers Hatchery. When they sign those documents, they guaranteed X amount of fish. It was a thousand thirty-two fish or...
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen, thirteen thousand twenty fish back to the, to the hatchery every year. They guaranteed that. They didn't, you know, if there was a drought, if there was a flood, no matter what happened, they would bring thirteen thousand twenty fish back to the hatchery every year. If that didn't happen, next year they would adjust their smolt to meet those, to meet that number, no matter what. It's in the contracts that they signed and, like Steve said, the people that are in charge of those contracts, the lawmakers in those, there was no ambiguity in that language. So, the Corps has known that they're not making those numbers, and they've done nothing to mitigate that. And what's happened from that now is our guides are suffering, they're, they're without, they're without customers. The cities, the county is suffering throughout the entire Rogue system in all three counties because we don't have people in our hotels, we don't have people in our restaurants buying gas, you know, doing the things that families would come here to do. Because we don't have those people coming here fishing anymore because the guides are telling their customers, you're not going to, and I don't want to lose you as a customer to come spring snook fishing because you're not going to, probably not going to catch a fish. The, the mitigation for these losses is only going to be one-way, and that's in court. Brock Smith and, and Steve went up and did, and tried to get House Bill pushed through that was, it made it very close, but due to some language in the contracts, they decided not to put it through. So we're going to move forward as a county, and we've also got a letter from Josephine County to join us in a legal issue with, with the Corps of Engineers to move this forward. And I just want everyone here to know that this is something serious, not only for Curry County, for the cities in Curry County and for everyone up the Rogue. If we don't do something with this now, this is the Rogue River. It's arguably the best river in our country. If we don't do something with this now, our kids, our grandchildren, they may not know what sport fishing is in the Rogue River.
I want to thank you for what you're doing. And, and Steve, I definitely want to thank you. You put an awful lot.
And he's done all the work.
And I truly appreciate that. What I am interested in right now, and then I don't know what the council is thinking, but nevertheless, what is it that you would like to see us do?
For right now, I would just ask that the council be, be aware of what we're trying to do. If we may come forward with something later down the road because this is going to be a drawn-out process, that we may ask the council to be on board with. And it's just for right now, it's, it's just nice that you know what's happening, that we're attempting to do, the, the impact that it's having on the county and the cities in the county, and, and hopefully have your assistance down the road to whatever we may need from, from the city council.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I support you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. Yeah, that, yes, councilor.
I had a question on, when I look at the data, I think the dams started coming down around two thousand nine in the Rogue River. Has anybody checked to see if there's a relationship between those years that dams were removed and the returns?
That's, that's an interesting question. ODFW is basing, right now, they're saying that, I was on this spring salmon conservation plan, half way, for many years, you know. And that's probably ended about its eleventh or twelfth year. We weren't, at the time, we were just working on wild fish, weren't talking about hatchery fish, you know, just on wild fish. Savage Rapids was, when it came down, was something I personally worked on for twenty-one years, you know. But when it came down, it was a fish killer because fish would go over and land on boulders and it didn't have a plunge pool, it went straight down on the rock and whatnot. But they felt that when they removed that dam, the estimate that they would get four thousand wild adults back up the river, you know. At about the same time or a little earlier, they stopped the harvest of wild fish pretty much completely throughout the whole Rogue system. ODFW is pretty proud that they increased the run by two thousand fish. You know, and then they removed Gold Ray as well, which kills some fish and whatnot. I'm saying that, yes, they increased by two thousand, that may be a decline, not an increase, you know. Because they're not speaking about the things that have been done, the dam removals and whatnot. So I still see a decrease even though the number's gone up, two thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
To clarify and make sure I understand this, so it's the quality of the hatchery system that you're mostly concerned with?
Well, there's, there's two subjects, you know. One is the hatchery fish and one's wild fish, you know. And in conjunction, they both have a problem. The dam blocked the spawning gravel, so the, the wild fish have no place to spawn. And the ones that spawn highest up are the early-run fish, you know. But the water temperatures coming out of the dam in the wintertime are four degrees warmer than they were historically. So they're colder in the summertime, warmer in the winter, which makes the eggs hatch too early into the wintertime environment and they perish. Now the control, that's harder to control, you know. But we could do it by taking these fish and putting them in tributaries up where the water was colder, like Beaufort Falls or, you know, up on the upper end of Little Beaufort Creek, you know, up one forty or whatever, in the cold water where they would spawn and the eggs would stay. The early-run fish stayed in the river for over a year. The later-run fish in the spring run go back in like six months, they're headed to the ocean. So they're kind of a little bit different lifestyle. The hatchery, on the other hand, is purely operational, you know. Poor maintenance and poor timing releases. They're releasing the bulk of the fish, the little smolt, in August and September when the river's the hottest and the coldest and the squawfish are the most active and, and birds, you know. The reason why they do that is because they don't want to release them earlier because they will eat wild spring snook fry, which is true because there's like one-point-seven billion of them, you know, go in, they eat the fry, and they're concerned about that. But those fry are on the upper end of the river. If they put those smolt into trucks, trucked them below those fry a month ago, they wouldn't have that problem. But they're worried about the expense. The expense belongs to the Corps of Engineers. They can't get any more money out of it. I think we're going to get some more money out of it.
Thank you. Anything for the council. Well, once again, sir, I want to thank you very much for all your efforts in this and Commissioner Posh for making this known to me.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, sir. All right. We go to citizens' comments, but a few of them have to do with the topic that we're going to be going into a little bit later.
I was going to go with that one.
Okay.
I don't know about this one.
Yeah, no, I was going to go ahead and hit with that and, and then Lori.
That one specifically.
Right, right, and that one we can hold on. All right. Michelle?
Hello.
Hi. Could you just come up and state your name and address?
No, no address. Oh, okay. Because we broadcast it now, so.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Michelle, sorry. Gold Victorian. I'm here, we need to talk about student safety, and this school's over now. But I'm very involved in the schools, I volunteered for like nineteen years with the district. I help kids go to college, figure out what they want to do after, I get snack back program. So I'm in town a lot. And my concern is, it seems in the past few years, there's nobody patrolling when there's the blinking lights. Or at Bradley Creek where before, back when Chief Andrews was here, we had either him or somebody always in the morning, in the noon, and the evening flashing lights. I've had to honk at people and try to get them to slow down. And it's just really, it's kind of scary, but it's frustrating because people shouldn't be driving through town that fast. And especially when I know, especially when I'm coming north, and I'm going like thirty and there wasn't by me and they don't even care about the blinking lights. It's like, seriously, that's not cool because we have kids and we don't have a flashing thing for that crosswalk in front of the high school. And then going back and forth to Bradley Creek, it's like people live around that school a lot and they go across the street to the garden. And there used to be an officer who was parked out front or at least some presence where they even left a car with no cop, but that's fine. But I'm just, I know school's not till September, but it's just something for the last couple of months, I've just noticed it getting worse and worse and worse, but the last few years, it's progressively gone to this point. So I just figured maybe put that out there, make it a priority again because there's too many people that, you know, I see going by way too fast. And on the other hand of that, it's revenue for the city. Because seriously, when they're going thirty-five, they're in a school zone, they have to be popped. And that would bring revenue back to the city and help us protect the kids even more. But that was basically what I wanted to present because it's been on my nerves for a while, especially when I'm sitting there feeling like an idiot honking, but seriously, they can't be going that fast. And so, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Administrator, get together with the chief. Yeah, well, the administrator will get together with the chief and, and take a look at it, okay?
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay. We've got a public hearing, or no, no, that's, oh, that's right, Lori. I know you're back there, there you are. Did you want to say something?
Yes. Well, this is just a quick acknowledgement and thank you to the city council and to the urban renewal committee for allotting the money for the urban renewal benches. And it's been a long incoming and a lot of due diligence and a lot of hit and miss with learning about the elements of the coast and what will withstand the elements. And we are happy to say, as you can probably see, that the benches are in, thirteen benches, and we're really excited about them and we poured this cement pad, we stained them, we put the benches on, and now we're in the process of planting around the benches to kind of create a park-like environment at each place and make it an inviting place to want to sit. And the board and the volunteers and the committees that Ariel has set up have just been phenomenal in showing up and working together and, and we're proving that Gold Beach does have spirit. And it's, it's exciting process. I don't know about it being ninety-one in my house today. What is going on? I just talked to Brett at Coos Forest Patrol, he says, you know, we're hitting record highs. We're just at crazy record coastal. And that the fires, the fires, he said, are in, switching over from inland to all up and down the coast now. We're talking Lincoln City, Astoria, Newport, Gold Beach, on-the-coast fires because it's, it was ninety-one here and it was sixteen acres. What's going on? Anyway, thank you very much, we're really excited, and thank you for your support.
Yeah, we really appreciate all the effort that you put into this as well.
Thank you.
And that, that bench in front of the bookstore, you know, that, you guys actually did a pretty argon cool job with that. That was very nice. And I actually ended up having to take a picture of two employees there that wanted to sit on the bench. And they followed me.
That was great. It was going to be two trees.
Well, one of them was my wife, so I didn't have it. Didn't really have any real say-so in that.
You'll see two trees eventually, either side of that bench with grasses around them, so.
Yeah. But once again, thank you. All right. And we're going to a public hearing right now. And this is a hearing on the use of state shared revenue funds.
Yes, I got here late, I need to give you a...
Bring it on up.
We have the schedule at the end, you guys, both of the people for the dangerous building are here, so if you want to rearrange this schedule, it's up to you.
Well, it's actually, yeah, it's up to me. And I think as long as we've got them both here, we can go ahead and, let's get going. And we'll go into the public hearing in just a moment. But we're going to go into, which is at the end of the agenda.
Okay, so after the last council meeting, I wrote to each of the property owners, they're both on Matier Road, I wrote to each of the property owners to tell them what your decision was. So they had thirty days from the date of the letter that I sent them. So that time ends on June twenty-fourth, but I also put in the letter that if they had any questions regarding the notice to contact me and that if they wanted to address the council before the end of that expiration, that this would be the time to do it. So, so both of them have been notified in writing of what your wishes were from the main meeting.
All right, Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, the written letter, oh, sorry. James Crowe. The question I had is, it refers to any questions I have to ask the council as opposed to staff, so. The question I have is, to me it's unclear, it, it states that I'm supposed to obtain a demolition permit, which I'm going to do prior to June twenty-fourth, and completely remove the building. So do I have to completely remove the building by June twenty-fourth? There is no date specific to when the building has to be removed. So I'm erring on the side of the twenty-fourth, which I can't do.
Right, understandably. I, we had a procedure on that. Did you go ahead and notify, and then a certain amount of time, which was thirty days or sixty?
Right, the, what was decided, and I'll read this from the letter, specifically the council determined that the property owner must obtain a demolition permit to remove the structure within thirty days of this notice and completely remove the dangerous building. I think that may be why there's the confusion because the, the way that it was written said they had to obtain a demolition permit, but there was not like a date specific on when the structure had to be down. So the, the order that you guys gave me is that he had to get a demo permit within thirty days, but you didn't really say, you know, does, does it have to be taken down within those thirty days? The assumption is that, you know, shortly thereafter, it will be removed. And then the property owner should arrive proof of a building or manufacturer complacement permit within six months, which the date of this letter would make it October twenty-third. And that was to secure the onsite septic approval. So, you know, if you want to massage the nuances of whatever it is...
As far as the specific date, as far as bringing down?
Right, that's up, that's up to you guys.
Do I make a comment?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the most critical part of this is the timing of the septic permit. Because if I tear the building down before I obtain the permit, that creates a huge problem. It steps you into having to have a new permit as opposed to a sense of variance for the grandfathered structure. So as a contractor, I do this for people and I recommend that they get the permits and sometimes they don't. They go ahead and do a learn-to-burn, then they can't replace the structure because it doesn't meet the setbacks of the current requirements.
What are you talking then about as far as time?
I don't know. I put several calls into the DQ and I have yet to get a call back. I'm probably just going to have to go up there and talk to them in Coos Bay, pin them down on time. So because we're on the peripheral edge, they come down and try to stack up site visits. So we're kind of on the last on the list.
Counsel? Yes, ma'am.
I think I brought this up before, that that was a concern, that if the building comes down, the septic might be a problem. So I do understand that. So once you get the septic DQ down, then you'll get your feasibility for septic, then you can get the demo permit.
Yeah, they call it authorization.
Or do you have to put the septic in first?
Well, the septic's already existing and there's a permitted septic that CB's Plomin did under permit.
Do you have to replace it before you tear it down?
No. Well, possibly repair it. Probably not. It's been, if there was any damage to the system by this time, you know, seventeen years of sitting idle, it should have repaired itself. Septic systems, if you leave them idle, typically repair themselves provided somebody didn't mechanically damage it. But if there's a biofilm from overuse, that'll be gone. So chances are, the system will suffice and be grandfathered. And then within the footprint, the footprint has to kind of remain the same provided the setbacks are proper. So we can change the footprint a little bit if we still maintain a proper setback. The DQ agent will work with us on it, on making it so a manufactured home will fit. Kind of limited because of the county right-of-way and septic on size. So there's a lot of little nuances in getting it done.
I understand. I was just thinking that, you know, personally, if, administrator, what do you think? Do you think that you could work with Mr. Cruck or determining the time to have, you know, the structure removed?
I, yeah, I don't mind working with Mr. Cruck, but, you know, what is your timeline?
Well, see, that's the problem. That's the reason I brought that up is because we don't know how long it's going to take you to be able to do what you've got to do.
Well...
We can try to light a fire. From the city standpoint, we can try to light a fire under DQ and say, look, you know, this is an enforcement issue. We'd prefer that you put Mr. Cruck at the top of your list because it's a priority for the city and maybe that would help get them here sooner. I mean, that's something I can do.
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of way out whether we should do an extension or just have you give us monthly updates at the meeting. I think it's our job to come up with timelines, but then he needs to give us more information.
Right.
So a month from now, E Q will be updated, what's happened with DQ, how much more time it needs, and we can make a motion at that point. Or, because it's harder to pick a date today, I feel like it'd be premature. The goal was priorities, right?
Right.
Yeah, we're kind of at a spot right now that we really can't pick a date until we find out more. Now, that's a good suggestion.
I don't see a problem of the final, if you read the second requirement of obtaining a proof of a placement permit by October, I think everything can be done by, you know, the building can be removed or a permit can be issued per authorization and the building can be removed. I think that's an easy, by default, that's an easy schedule to meet. It's just the nuances of the septic and dealing with DQ on the front side of it knows. They just tend to, you know, be difficult. Easy to work with, but difficult timing wise to...
I don't have any problem with having the city administrator keep us updated. I mean, it seems like a reasonable request rather than set it specific day becoming down. Does anybody have any problems with the council?
I think I can make a motion if you'd like for...
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we allow Mr. Cruck extensions among his fresh Monday, every month he gives the administrator an update, not really with any inspections they need to do.
Okay, a motion has been made. Is there a second? Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And the reason for the first Monday is the second Monday is our council meetings. So that's why they want me in. So just shoot me, you know, that's probably the easiest way.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And I'll try to get ahold of DQ and see if they can move it up. Okay.
Good. Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
And then the other property owners are Mr. McCann and they are in the audience.
Yeah, please. Ma'am, just give your name, please. Roger.
My name is Leo Shipo McCann.
And I'm Neil McCann. Hi, we got that determination, a letter from you guys to tear down our chimney on the property, which is all that's sort of left. When we were here at that council meeting here, you know, and forgive us for not being the last one, we're not really, you know, familiar how things would have gone with council stuff. But I said that I would take down the walls and building remnants and stuff, right? Because I thought that was, you know, again, you know, according to these documents here, you know, it could fall into that dangerous building. I really didn't want that designation, so we sort of tore that down. You know, I'm, you know, I'm reading here our four parts of what the definition falls under and I was just asking because, you know, we weren't here, we missed that. How you determine that? Because I mean, I look at determination A, okay? Which is a structure of one of property repairs or reason of age and dilapidated condition, which that's not. It's not aged, not dilapidated. Poorly installed electrical wiring or equipment, doesn't have any of that. It's not affected chimney, it's not affected gas. Things aren't hooked up to it. And basically what it says is liable to fire. So here's the structure, okay, right, dilapidated, and maybe it wants to catch fire. I can see that. I can see it tear down. Just why I tore it down the other part because even though it survived two fires, and today is the anniversary, I'm not sure. Today's the anniversary of when the fire department went and, you know, used it, gave it our property to do for a test burn. So just funny that I'm here today on that day. And then on number B, it says it's a structure containing combustible. So I'm imagining that's if someone's got a garage with their storage, some crazy stuff or dynamite or gas, we need to take that down. There's nothing in that on that structure. You know, a structure which shall be kept or maintained and filthy as so as to spread contagious disease. Well, that chimney, there's nothing filthy on it. It's not spreading any contagious diseases. And it's not in a weak or weakened condition. My God, I tore the other part down. I have absolutely no problem. That chimney, man, it is solid. Have you seen it? I mean, it is like solid, solid up, or it must be like this, six feet deep, right? Okay, at least, what, twelve feet wide? Solid. So I'm going, okay. It's not going anywhere. Now, I thought, okay, hey, you know, if I was in the city, like the lower part of the city where we live now, okay, you're walking by the sidewalk and, hey, there's this chimney, I'd feel kind of, oh, hey, that's dangerous, it could fall. Because I'm on over ten acres. Okay? There's nothing around that structure of mine. It's just a pile of bricks held together with cement. Okay? I mean, that's all it is. If it falls, it's just going to fall on my property. It's not going to fall on the road. Okay? There's nothing around it. So I don't see where it's going to be, you know, a danger to any human or other structure. You know, I have more chance of being hit by a log falling off of my trees on my property and my head going for a walk than I do of that chimney falling down on me. I just don't think it's a dangerous structure. I mean, you know, maybe it's unsightly, maybe I should paint it or something, you know, paint it white or something, you know? But I'm just saying, it's not a dangerous structure. And that was my whole point of tearing down that other part, which I thought could be construed as a dangerous, could have caught fire. But there's nothing there that catches fire, there's nothing here to spread this disease, there's nothing here where, you know, the bricks are going to fall. You know, again, so I don't understand why we're being told to take it down. That's all. I'm just going, well, you know, it doesn't meet these criteria. It's not of any harm to any other person's structure. You know?
Is the property fence where nobody can get onto it?
You know, is that a concern? Without any better, if I fence off the entrance, because it has that ditch in the trees in front of it there, so...
Because the, what I had written in the letter, councilors, was at the May thirteenth meeting, the council acknowledged that the area had shown much improvement. However, they felt the chimney still presented a danger and an attractive nuisance and ordered it removed. And so while people are not supposed to trespass, I mean, obviously people are not supposed to go on here, but I believe that the concern that the council had, and you chime in if I'm incorrect, was that if somebody were to trespass on your property with their children, could it be a danger? And so that falls under what we call attractive nuisance. So it's not that the letter referenced that it was a dangerous building, it was that that portion of the building still left intact could, if somebody were to trespass...
Well, somebody could trespass, and they're going to get hit by a folly rock, they're going to get hit by one of those trees that I have on my slope before they're ever going to get hit with that chimney. Okay? This is my whole point with that, you know? I went there, I looked, and I went, okay. I am so impressed with the chimney. Okay, right? Okay? Because again, it wasn't structural integrity part of the old house or nothing, okay, right? The old house is gone, it's just built separately, standalone. Okay? That's how they built it back in the day. It's a standalone brick structure. Okay? I think, to think of that, it's like someone's got a barbecue, a big barbecue in their backyard, you know, it looks afraid it's going to blow over and fall over. You know, and this is not me just piling, putting a pile of bricks up. Okay? I'm more worried about my neighbor. He's got a pile of logs that are sitting up there, okay, right, on the street. I'm thinking, okay, you know, my property is right there, I can park. I'm more worried about his logs rolling over than I am that chimney. I just don't see that chimney, even on a trespass here or something, that chimney is just not going anywhere. Okay? It's not going to blow down in the storm. You know, that's all.
So what you're saying, and I have to admit that I have not seen it personally, but what you're saying is that that chimney is a very solid structure. Okay? All I saw, and I think some of the council as well, were just photographs of it. Now, as such, if it's solid, what have you, what, I'm kind of curious, and we definitely don't want to make this hard on you. You can go ahead and let's get going. And we'll go into the public hearing in just a moment. But we're going to go into which is at the end of the agenda.
Okay, so after the last council meeting, I wrote to each of the property owners, they're both on Matier Road, I wrote to each of the property owners to tell them what your decision was. So they had thirty days from the date of the letter that I sent them. So that time ends on June twenty-fourth, but I also put in the letter that if they had any questions regarding the notice to contact me and that if they wanted to address the council before the end of that expiration, that this would be the time to do it. So both of them have been notified in writing of what your wishes were from the May meeting.
All right. Mr. Cruck?
Yeah, the written letter, sorry. James Cruck. The question I had is, it refers to any questions I have to ask the council as opposed to staff. So the question I have is, to me, it's unclear. It states that I'm supposed to obtain a demolition permit, which I'm willing to do prior to June twenty-fourth and completely remove the building. So do I have to completely remove the building by June twenty-fourth? There is no date specific to when the building has to be removed. So I'm erring on the side of the twenty-fourth, which I can't do.
Right. Understand. We had a procedure on that. Does it go ahead and number five? And then a certain amount of time, which were thirty days or sixty?
Right. What was decided, and I'll read this from the letter, specifically the council determined that the property owner must obtain a demolition permit to remove the structure within thirty days of this notice and completely remove the dangerous building. I think that may be why there's the confusion because the way that it was written said they had to obtain a demolition permit, but there was not like a date specific on when the structure had to be down. So the order that you guys gave me is that he had to get a demo permit within thirty days, but you didn't really say, you know, does it have to be taken down within those thirty days? The assumption is that, you know, shortly thereafter, it will be removed. And then the property owner should arrive proof of a building or manufacturer home placement permit within six months, which the date of this letter would make it October twenty-third. And that was to secure the onsite septic approval. So, you know, if you want to massage the nuances of whatever it is...
As far as the specific date, as far as bringing down?
Right. That's up to you guys.
Do I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, the most critical part of this is the timing of the septic permit. Because if I tear the building down before I obtain the permit, that creates a huge problem. It steps you into having to have a new permit as opposed to a sense of variance for the grandfathered structure. So as a contractor, I do this for people and I recommend that they get the permits and sometimes they don't. They go ahead and do a learn-to-burn, then they can't replace the structure because it doesn't meet the setbacks of the current requirements.
What are you talking then about as far as time?
I don't know. I put several calls into the DQ and I have yet to get a call back. I'm probably just going to have to go up there and talk to them in Coos Bay, pin them down on time. So because we're on the peripheral edge, they come down and try to stack up site visits. So we're kind of on the last on the list.
Counsel? Yes, ma'am.
I think I brought this up before, that that was a concern, that if the building comes down, the septic might be a problem. So I do understand that. So once you get the septic DQ down, then you'll get your feasibility for septic, then you can get the demo permit.
Yeah, they call it authorization.
Or do you have to put the septic in first?
Well, the septic's already existing and there's a permitted septic that CB's Plomin did under permit.
Do you have to replace it before you tear it down?
No. Well, possibly repair it. Probably not. It's been, if there was any damage to the system by this time, you know, seventeen years of sitting idle, it should have repaired itself. Septic systems, if you leave them idle, typically repair themselves provided somebody didn't mechanically damage it. But if there's a biofilm from overuse, that'll be gone. So chances are, the system will suffice and be grandfathered. And then within the footprint, the footprint has to kind of remain the same provided the setbacks are proper. So we can change the footprint a little bit if we still maintain a proper setback. The DQ agent will work with us on it, on making it so a manufactured home will fit. Kind of limited because of the county right-of-way and septic on size. So there's a lot of little nuances in getting it done.
I understand. I was just thinking that, you know, personally, if, administrator, what do you think? Do you think that you could work with Mr. Cruck or determining the time to have, you know, the structure removed?
I, yeah, I don't mind working with Mr. Cruck, but, you know, what is your timeline?
Well, see, that's the problem. That's the reason I brought that up is because we don't know how long it's going to take you to be able to do what you've got to do.
Well...
We can try to light a fire. From the city standpoint, we can try to light a fire under DQ and say, look, you know, this is an enforcement issue. We'd prefer that you put Mr. Cruck at the top of your list because it's a priority for the city and maybe that would help get them here sooner. I mean, that's something I can do.
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of way out whether we should do an extension or just have you give us monthly updates at the meeting. I think it's our job to come up with timelines, but then he needs to give us more information.
Right.
So a month from now... So, a month from now, you have been updated what's happened with DQ, how much time it needs, and we can make a motion at that point. Or, because it's harder to pick a date today, I feel like it would be premature. The goal was progress, right?
Right.
Not perfection.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of at a spot right now that we really can't pick a date until we, until we find out more. So that's, that's good suggestion.
I don't, I don't see a problem of the final, if you read the second requirement of obtaining a proof of a placement permit by October. I think everything can be done by, you know, the building can be removed, or a permit can be issued for authorization, and the building can be removed. I think that's an easy, by the fall, that's an easy schedule to meet. It's just the nuances of the septic, um, and dealing with DQ. In the, on the front side of it, who knows? They just tend to, you know, be difficult. Easy to work with, but difficult timing wise to.
That's right. I don't have any problem with having the administrator keep us updated. I mean, it seems like a reasonable request rather than set it specifically. Does anybody have any problems with, uh, the council?
Can you make a motion if you'd like, or?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we allow Mr. Crick extensions along his, uh, first Monday of every month. He gives the administrator an update, and I'll be able to do any inspections, please do.
Okay, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
I have a second, but councilor.
Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
And the reason for the first Monday is the second Monday is our council meetings. So, that's why they're voting in. So, just, just shoot me an email. That's probably the easiest way.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll try to get ahold of DQ and see if they can move me up.
Good. Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the other property owner, our insur sufices McCann, and they are in the audience.
Yeah, please. Ma'am, just give your name, please. Roger.
My name is Leo Sipo, McCann.
And I'm Neil McCann. Hi, we got that determination. I, I'm, a letter from you guys to tear down our chimney on the property, which is all that's sort of, uh, left. Uh, when we were here at that council meeting here, uh, you know, and forgive us for, for not being the last one. We're not really, you know, familiar how things really go in this council stuff. But, uh, I said that I would take down the, uh, the walls and building remnants and stuff, right? Because I thought that was, you know, again, you know, according to these documents here, you know, it could fall into that dangerous building. I really didn't want that designation, so we sort of tore that down. You know, I'm, you know, I'm reading here our four parts here, but the definition falls under. And I was just asking, because, you know, we weren't here, we missed that. I'm, how you determine that? Because, I mean, I look at, at, uh, determination A, okay? Which is a structure, one of property repairs or reason of age and dilapidated condition, which that's not. It's not aged, not dilapidated. Uh, poorly installed electrical wiring or equipment, doesn't have any of that. It's not affected chimney, it's not affected gas. Things aren't hooked up to it. And basically, what it says is liable to fire. So, here's the structure, okay, right, dilapidated, and maybe it wants to catch fire. I could see that. I could see it down. I just, why I tore it down the other part, because even though it survived two, two fires. And today is, it's the anniversary, I'm not sure. Today's the anniversary of when the fire department went and, you know, used it. Uh, we gave it to our property to do for a test burn, so just funny that I'm here today on that day. Um, and then on number B, it says it's a structure containing combustible. So I'm imagining that's if someone's got a garage or restoring some crazy stuff, or dynamite, or gasoline. Hey, take that down. There's nothing in that, on that structure. You know, a, a structure which shall be kept or maintained and filthy as so as to spread contagious disease. Well, that chimney, there's nothing filthy on that. It's, it's not spreading any contagious diseases. And it's not in a weak or weakened condition. My God, I tore the other part down. I have seen no problem. That chimney, man, it is solid. Have you seen it? I mean, it is like solid, solid up, or it must be like this, six feet deep, or at a case, at least like twelve feet wide. Solid. So I'm going, okay. It's not, it's not going anywhere. Now, I thought, okay, hey, you know, if I was in the city, like, the lower part of the city where we live now. Okay, you're walking by the sidewalk, and hey, there's this chimney. I, I feel kind of, oh, hey, that's dangerous. It could fall. Because I, I'm on over ten acres. Okay, there, there is nothing around that structure of mine. It's, it's just a pile of bricks held together with cement. Okay, I mean, that's, that's all it is. If it falls, it's just gonna fall on my property. It's not gonna fall on the road. Okay, there's nothing around it. So I don't see where, where it's gonna be, uh, you know, a danger to any human or other structure. You know, it's, it, I have more chance of being hit by a log falling off on my trees on my property and my head going for a walk than I do of that chimney falling down on me. I, I, I just don't think it's a dangerous structure. I mean, you know, maybe it's unsightly. Maybe I should paint it or something, you know. Paint wave or something, you know, but I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it's not a dangerous structure. And that was my whole point of, of tearing down that other part, which I thought could be construed as, as a dangerous. Could, could have caught fire. But there's nothing now that catches fire. There's nothing here that spreads this disease. There's nothing here where, uh, you know, the bricks are gonna fall. Uh, you know, again, um, so I don't understand why, why we're being told to take it down. That's, that's all. It's not, well, you know, it doesn't meet these criteria. It's, it's not of any harm to any other person's structure. You know.
Is the property fence where nobody can get onto it?
You know, is that, is that, is that a concern? Without being compared if I fence off the entrance? Because it has that ditch in the trees in front of it there, so.
Because the, um, what I had written in the letter, um, councilors was, um, at the May thirteenth meeting, the council acknowledged that the area had shown much improvement. However, they felt the chimney still presented a danger and an attractive nuisance and ordered it removed. And so, um, while people are not supposed to trespass, I mean, obviously, people are not supposed to go on here. But, um, I believe that the concern that the council had, and you chime in if I'm incorrect, was that if somebody were to trespass on your property with their children, it could, could it be a danger? That's, and so that falls under what we call attractive nuisance. So, it's not that the letter referenced that it was a dangerous building. It was that that portion of the building is still left intact. Could, if somebody were to trespass on your property.
Well, somebody could trespass on my property. They're gonna get hit by a folly rock. They're gonna get hit by one of those trees that I have on my slope before they're ever gonna get hit with that chimney. Okay, that, that, this is my whole point with that, you know. I, I went there, I looked, and I went, okay. I am so impressed with the chimney, okay, right? Okay, because again, it wasn't, uh, structural integrity part of the old house or nothing, okay, right? The old house is gone. It's just built separately, standalone. Okay, that's like, it's how they built it back in the day. It's a standalone brick structure. Okay, I think, to think of that, it's like someone's got a barbecue, a big barbecue in their backyard. You know, look, it's afraid it's gonna blow over and fall over. You know, I mean, this is not, this is not me just piling, putting a pile of bricks up, okay? I, I, I'm more worried about my neighbor. He's got a pile of logs that are sitting up there, okay, right? On the street. I'm thinking, okay, you know, my property is right there, I can park. I'm more worried about his logs rolling over than I am that, that chimney. I just don't see that chimney, even on a trespass here or something. That chimney is just not going anywhere. Okay, it's not gonna blow down in the storm. You know, so.
So what you're saying, and I have to admit that I have not seen it personally. But what you're saying is that that chimney is a very solid structure, okay? All I saw, and I think some of the, uh, council as well, were just photographs of it. Now, as such, if it's solid, what have you. What, I'm, I'm kinda curious. And we definitely don't wanna make this hard when you. It, it's not that. But what is your purpose for that chimney, yeah?
Oh, will you, I'll be honest, okay, right? I, I, I don't really have that at this moment in time. Okay, you know, for us, it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of sad, but it's a little momental. It's the only thing that's left of the house. We go out there and, you know, that's where we were until the fire displaced us. So, um, for us, it has some, some person, it's the only thing left standing. We lost, we lost, you know, lives and animals. And, you know, a lot of our photos and other jewelry we lost in the fire. It just disappeared, so. Um, so it's not that I have any great plans. I mean, you know, obviously, um, if and when a building is put there, that's gonna be, that's gonna be torn down. Okay, right, you know, because I don't know, seeing how I can get included in someone's building plans. So I don't really have plans for it. I didn't know I needed to have plans for it, I guess, really.
No, you really don't. It's not that. I'm just kinda curious.
So, so, you know, but, but at the same time, it's like, it's just like, oh my God, it's, it's not dangerous to anyone here. A trespasser may need to be more worried about the cougar running on the property or a tree. I'm just saying, rather than that chimney. And that, that was my feeling, is like, you know, that's where you run high. If something was falling, you'd run and stand by that chimney to get protection from. It's that type of structure. It's not a, not a flimsy little thing, okay, right, you know? It's not teetering in the wind. It's not a two, three-story building. It was just a one-story structure.
Yeah, understand, sir. Council, do you have anything that you'd like to ask, comment on? Yes, ma'am?
I guess I am concerned with consistency. When we did the one on First Street, and then we have a different council makeup now, so it might be a different direction. Um, and as you know, I'm released to the one that's fair down building. You worked, the concern was that a child could get into that house, and that it was dangerous and it was soft. So in this case, the correlation would be a child climbed into the chimney. Um, we've required other people to give us a structural engineer saying that it's solid and it's not fall down. So do we wanna do those kinds of things, or just take it down, or do we wanna assume that it's okay? I, I don't know. I think people should watch their kids and not let them trespass, but, um.
You want me to block, you want me to block off that inch for that concern, okay? Because I go, okay, you know, I'm at, I'm at the end of County Road there, okay, right? You know, it, it stops where I am, you know. And I think there's a four houses up that mountain road there. It's a four-wheel drive to get up. So it's not the type of place, okay, where people just go lolling about or, like, walking around town or anywhere else here. It's just, it's just not. We're out there, it's ten acres. It's a little bit more wilderness. So, I'm not expecting a little baby there. How would they get there? Okay, I mean, even on my property, it's my entrance, you gotta go from one end. It starts, you know, four hundred yards up there and coming along and stuff. So it's not like it's like right next door to a populated area. There's nobody around us at all. Okay, so, and that's all. I mean, I, I can see your point, you know. So maybe, okay, I'll go a block, something in a block, so the kids can't, uh, climb up, if that's, uh... You know, it's okay, sure, because I wouldn't want my kid to get stuck in there if they were with dad over the neighbors and they walked across and climbed out or stuff. I can see doing something like that. I have no problem doing that. Okay, if that's your concern. But I just, I think there's nothing wrong with it being there, so.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, council, what do you think about that suggestion that we just heard as far as being able to? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I would say if it was made, nobody could get into it, and maybe the driveway was blocked off. I don't really see that as a problem.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
So I have a couple of concerns. One is that you don't live on site, so that you can't monitor that like somebody that live on site could. The fact that it's not secure, um, is a concern for me as well. I don't know if it exists currently, but not too long ago, there was a housing facility, a house or two down the road from you, that housed special needs folks that would often wander. So that would be a concern, might as well, and I guess, and I understand there's some level of value. But if it poses a certain level of liability, if there be any reason why you wouldn't want to bring it down, if it's not going to be used.
Well, I think just, you know, for ourselves right here, just the cost of it, just how are you coming to take it down right now? It's a, you know, greater for us. And so, again, it's, uh, look, you know, I mean, it's, uh, I just, I don't see that, that, you know, liability. Risk is on anyone's, uh, anyone's property, uh, that, uh, that walks on it. You know, the kid, the property is not completely vacant, you know. It is up for sale, as it's always been for, since, since we moved off of it. So it's not like it's completely vacant. No one ever goes there or stops by. Um, and again, we are out on the very outskirts of town. Again, this is actually a sign to say, it's not like we're in town here with the kids walking. Because I, I would agree. It'd be down if it was in town, but we're out. You know, we're way out there and just on the edge of town, you know. It's ten acres and...
Boy, I do have a comment to that as well.
Sure, okay.
You do have children that live up the hill from where you live, or where that, uh, that chimney is. And as a matter of fact, my children meet those halfway, and they hike on Taylor Creek just beyond there. So, um, you do have kids traveling.
Oh, yes. Oh, no, no. I, I understand there are some children up there. But we're not talking little, small, little children, baby.
The school bus also drops kids off after the class.
Absolutely right. That's why we bought the property. It was on the edge of the school bus.
Those are just some points I wanna make.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Um, would you, well, actually, does anybody have any objections to the suggestion that, uh, Councilor Brennan made? I certainly don't. I don't know, and, and do you remember what he had, what he stated, sir?
Well, he wants me to put, uh, block off the driveway entrance, right?
And the entrance is true.
Right, so no child can, uh, come up.
Would you have any problems with that?
I don't have a problem with that, no, no.
Yes, ma'am?
Before I read anything, um, may I put staff on the spot and ask, is, do you have a different opinion than whether it's solid and safe? Or do we need a second opinion now?
I have not personally looked at it to see if the fire damaged the structural integrity of it. I have not personally.
It doesn't have to be fired. It can just be, I don't know. So the chimney's not gonna fall over or?
Right, but the reason why it's there is because the house burned down. And sometimes, depending on how the fire was, it can damage stonework. I don't, I don't know. I don't know, um, I think, I think I would like to... See, we can't, we can't trespass on your property, you know, like to come. I can take pictures, but we can't, like, come.
You know, I, I, I agree with how hard it is to find information.
Yeah.
Because I went online, okay, right, and, and I searched, and I searched in a lot of different places trying to find, okay, what, what is out there as far as literature goes on a house that is burnt down, but its chimney remains? Okay, just on the structural integrity. I couldn't find anything. Like, everything was about building the chimneys now, just the code and stuff, you know, as far as the connections. Nothing was talking about these big, huge bricks, chimneys and what happens to them. Because, you know, that's weird. It's a solid ton of bricks.
So to answer your question, Councilor Kaufman, um, I, I would feel better, like, you know, if, if the McCanns would allow us city staff to go look at it, I could take, um, Mr. Nudal with me. Yeah, and we could, we could report back to you on, um, yeah, on how... And if, and let's just say, we'll report back next month, but if we go out there and it's like, oh my gosh, it's not what you said, and it's terrible, and something needs to happen immediately, then I will notify everyone. Okay?
All right.
So I will take Mr. Crick here and Mr. Nudal and myself, and we'll go take a look at it this week. If that's okay with you.
Sure, yeah, sure. Oh, I thought you guys had that right.
All right, councilor, uh, just a second. The council, ma'am, yes.
My only suggestion is that if they do end up blocking the driveway access, that it'd still be accessible so that you can show the property for sale.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, if that, uh, do we have something worked out right now?
Okay, so what is it now? I'm a little bit confused. Let's see what's going on here.
Um, myself and fire chief and public works director, we're gonna come out sometime this week. We're gonna get all three of us at one time and run out there and just take a look at it and...
Can I be there when you do that?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
Um.
Carolina.
Uh, yeah, actually, before we leave, um, call, stop by and call the office tomorrow so I can get your phone number. Or just shoot me an email and tell me what your phone number is.
Okay.
Okay, because I got your email before.
Sure, all right.
Okay.
Good, all right.
Yep, but yes, you.
Okay, so, so, so you're going out there, you guys are gonna look at it, all right, and then we're gonna determine where to go from there?
Yep.
Exactly.
Is that, okay, very good. All right, super.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna take a break pretty soon, but by, before we do, we're gonna get into our... Where is it at?
State revenue.
A public hearing. And this is a hearing, uh, the first one is a hearing on the use of state sheriff revenue funds. I'm gonna have the administrator telling everybody how we generally handle these funds. And, uh, then if anyone in a public hearing, if anyone in the audience desires to speak concerning this topic, then you have the right to do so. And I will definitely, uh, make sure that you get that time.
Okay, so, um, O R S two twenty-one seven seventy requires that cities adopt an ordinance or a resolution annually stating that we wish to receive... stating that we wish to receive state revenue sharing. If we don't do that, then the state is not obligated to send us that shared revenue. So we do have to have a public hearing on the use of the state share of revenue before the budget committee, and then also at the city council when we adopt a budget for the following year. During the budget hearing that we had on April 17th, we did, we did hold that first public hearing, and what the city has, for as long as I can remember, so I'm going to say at least twenty years, we use those state shared revenues to purchase city vehicles. So we alternate between the police department and the public works department, but that's what we use those funds for.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone like to comment on that? We'll close out one. And the second is a final review of the approved fiscal year nineteen and 2020 budget.
Okay, and the, the budget resolution, there wasn't, and correct me if I am wrong, because I went back through the whole budget document, there wasn't a whole lot of changes to the, to the proposed budget. The one that I remember that had stood out was the water deposit reserve fund that we were going to refund to the accounts for the last twenty years, the oldest twenty years. And then from then on, we can decide after that what we want to do after that, but we'll keep them, so that section got changed. But pretty much that was the only changes. So the resolution, the budget pages are before you tonight, and those are just the actual just dry budget pages, they don't have all the attachments that go with it. When the budget gets adopted, those will get all published together with the salary schedule and personnel summaries and all that, notices that were published. So unless you have any questions, the resolution has all of the revenue and expenditure, actually, just the expenditure, the appropriation portion of it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the audience? Once again, concerning our fiscal year budget, which begins in July.
And again, we have the April 17 budget hearing, is when we reviewed it, and this has been available on the city's website since...
All right. If not, then we will close that public hearing. All right, well, we still have a little bit of time. We'll go ahead and get to citizen requested agenda items. This is a request to adopt a resolution affirming the position of the United States Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities supporting local cable franchising, including non-monetary obligation. Basically, what this means in a nutshell is that the, you know, we do franchises, and one of them, of course, is for cable, that type of thing. In the past, they had always, I can remember back in, what, 2004, I guess it was, yeah, 2004, 2006, whatever it was, the last time that we did, that part of the package dealt with making sure that the schools, the library, what have you, also got free access to this. And at any rate, that has been a common practice for a long, long time. Now, however, they are trying to state that if they do that, then they will subtract that franchise fees from us, and we don't get as much. So, Administrator Vice Crew Data, please make sure everybody knows exactly what I did say or didn't say.
This, Mr. King, who very generously records our meetings for us, he was the one that brought this to our attention because the PEG channel, the public education, I can't remember what the G stands for, government, yeah, I should go there. If they, they, they have, we have the ability in our current franchise agreement to have our own PEG channel if we so desire, but it just seems kind of disingenuous from their franchise. If you all recall a couple of years ago when we were negotiating with Charter, how painful that was. And it's like, okay, you said that you were going to provide these services for free, but now you're saying that, okay, yeah, we'll provide them, but now we're going to start deducting, but the kicker, as I understand it from Mr. King, is that they need to decide what those services are worth. It's not like we can go, oh, the city's bill is eighty dollars a month and they'll deduct that much. They could say giving that free service to the library is worth all of our franchise fees, and we get a substantial amount. We average about thirty thousand dollars a year in franchise fees, so if, it's sort of like the old fox in the hen house thing, if they get to decide what gets deducted, I just don't think that's right, but, but Mr. King is here if you have any specific questions. And I apologize because I did do some research on this as far as what was heard before the FCC, and I downloaded some of the information specifically related to the League of Organs, League of National Cities and the US Conference of Mayors, and I didn't send that to you till today, so I apologize. It is very dry, but you have it now if you want to read it. But it sounds like it's a done deal. When I was talking to Mr. King earlier, it sounds like it's a done deal, and now it's going to be up to Congress or the Senate, or whichever one of them, to say, no, you can't do that. But there's a lot of heavy hitters that testified before the FCC, big cities, Portland was one of them, Atlanta, you know, to say that you can't, you can't do this. So I think this is more just a mast that roar kind of thing, that we need to show that here, us in Little Old Beach, we need our franchise fees, and you're using a public, you're using our right of ways, you're using our public infrastructure, and you're making money on that, and you should have to pay for that.
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
What if we don't?
If you don't what?
Work it out a group.
Oh, and it's more of a, just kind of a show to the FCC that, you know, cities, small cities, it's not just cities like Portland, but small cities like Old Beach, it matters. But I just feel like you negotiated to provide that service, so you can't do an end run with the FCC now and try to get out of an agreement that you negotiated with us.
Well, not get out of the agreement, but try to go ahead and soak it through some topic.
So, so it's not like this has any force of law, it's just officially saying the city of Old Beach agrees with these other organizations, that this is not a fair way for business, for profit businesses to do this.
Any questions concerning that?
And if you decide you want to adopt the resolution, it's in the resolution section if you decide that you want to adopt it.
Thank you. Well, I am going to go ahead at this particular time to call about a ten, twelve, whatever minute break. We've been sitting here since even before six o'clock, and I know that it can be a little uncomfortable out there as well. So get on up, stretch your legs, and mingle.